We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Everybody, welcome to the Port Washington Unified School District Board of Education Candidates Nights, sponsored by the League of Women Voters. My name is Judy Esther Quest, and I will serve as your moderator this evening. I represent the League of Women Voters, and I am not from Port Washington. The League of Women Voters promotes civic responsibility through voter education, such as tonight's forum. For 250 years, informed and active citizens have been a linchpin of our democracy. The League is nonpartisan and does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. Throughout our history, the League has provided opportunities for candidates seeking public office to take their case directly to voters. We applaud you for taking the time to learn about these candidates. All four candidates have agreed to the 14 rules for this forum. I will read them briefly. The moderator will be a member of the League of Women Voters from outside the district. I am the moderator, I'm from Manhasset. The moderator will pull straws or flip a coin to determine the order of speaking. I pulled straws. Each candidate will be allowed three minutes for an opening statement. After the candidates have spoken, the moderator will open the meeting with questions from the audience. The moderator will instruct the audience to confide each question to the issues in the campaign and to take no more than one minute when asking a question. The moderator will be the arbiter of whether questions are appropriate, repetitive, or abusive. Questions from the audience may be addressed to specific individuals or to the candidates in general, although all candidates will be given an opportunity to answer a question. There is no rebuttal. The moderator will attempt to rotate the order of speaking for each question. A League member will act as timekeeper. This is Judy Jacobson. One half-minute from the end of any time period, the timekeeper will warn the speaker by a prearranged signal. When the time is up, the speaker will be allowed to finish the sentence. Repeatedly speaking past the deadline may result in a candidate being muted. Candidates have two minutes for closing statement and will speak in the same order as the opening statement. Since the purpose of the meeting is to determine the candidates' views, no substitute speakers will be allowed to appear should a candidate be unable to attend. The use of props, charts, or visuals, and the distribution of campaign literature is prohibited. In accordance with League policy, audio or video recording by unauthorized members of the media will be permitted only if agreed to by all of the candidates present. The League maintains the right to record the forum. No other recording will be allowed. No partial transcript or recording may be published without written permission from the League. The League maintains the right to record the forum and make it available to the public after the event on its Facebook page and website. No other recording will be allowed. No partial transcript or recording may be aired or published without permission from the League. These are the rules of the forum. And according to the straw, Ms. Epstein, we'll go first. I'd ask all the candidates, please, to put their videos on and unmute themselves. Thank you very much. And you can, each candidate will get one opening, will get an opening statement, not to exceed three minutes, and the very first opening statement comes from Ms. Epstein.
Good evening. Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this opportunity for the community to virtually meet the candidates. Thank you to the community for taking the time to watch, be an informed voter, and I hope that everyone is safe and healthy. I'm Julie Epstein, and I'm running for the school board. I've been married to Jay for almost 20 years, and we have two daughters who are in seventh and ninth grades. I was practicing attorney who specialized in healthcare law and compliance with a focus on privacy and fraud. I'm running for the board because I believe I can make a difference and bring forth better communication, process, and accountability. About five years ago, my family relocated at Port Washington, and in our short time here, we've been able to experience each level of education in the school district. In order to get to know Port Washington better, I jumped right in, volunteering on committees and eventually joining the Salem HSA as co-president, the Weber Executive Board, and now in my current role as parent council co-president. In each of these roles, I consistently questioned, evaluated, and implemented new ideas to streamline initiatives. Parents Council has given me the opportunity to gain an understanding of the scope of the board's responsibilities and the limitations put on the school districts of the state of New York. I know that it's not a curricular board, but rather one of governance, policy, budget, and oversight. Through my service, I've been a part of the legislative task force advocating not only for more state aid but for a revision in the formula. I've worked to change the district website so information can be more readily accessible to everyone. I have run outreach programs such as the clothing drive, and during COVID-19, I've been working with the local food pantries to make sure that they're fully stocked, and as a member of the Community Chest COVID-19 Response Team. I continue to push for better and newer ways to communicate so that information can be clear, informative, and multilingual, ultimately reaching more of the community outside of the parents in the school. I'm an active member in my synagogue, serving as co-president of Sisterhood, on the Board of Trustees, and organizing Maginot events here and there. While it's true that I have done these things, I have not done them alone. I've built partnerships with stakeholders in order to build trust, collaboration, and create forward motion, all while challenging the organization in a manner of advancement and not status quo. I hope that after meeting me tonight, you will give me the opportunity to continue to serve Port Washington at the table and not just from the sidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Dr. Block.
Hello, I'm Adam Block, and I'm running for school board. I was born and raised in Port Washington, graduated from Guggenheim, Weber, and Schreiber, lived all over the country, did my doctorate in public health and economics at Harvard, where I met my wife Lauren, who is also from Port Washington and is a physician treating COVID patients at Northwell. We have boy-girl twins in second grade at Salem and a little guy, Jordan, who is starting kindergarten there in the fall. We are in Port Washington for the long haul. I'm running because the current board has given our kids 45 minutes a week of online class time for the last three months. That is nine minutes a day, nine minutes. COVID is not going away so fast, and the district has just has not kept up with the other districts on Long Island, with private schools, with religious schools, even with preschools, they're providing more online teaching than Port is. In times when families and businesses are all adapting, the school district is falling behind at the time that we need the most. All my kids want to do is see their teachers every day. The district is saying no, I will say yes as board member. I'm the right person because I'm an insider in Port Washington. I've run every turkey trot since 1994, all of them faster than Matt Engel, but I'm an outsider to the school board. We already have enough experience on the board. This year has got to be about innovation. It's a completely different year, and I'll tell you what the board needs. It's two things. First is a completely fresh perspective, someone that'll think about new ways of doing things that are outside of the status quo, new ways in a COVID environment, which is going to be here next year and perhaps for longer. This board has trouble changing, and I'm here to help change things. The second skill set I have is a skill set that is completely unrepresented on the board right now. I understand public health, I'm a public health professor, my wife is a Northwell physician, she and I wrote a kid's book on COVID-19. I know how to teach online, I've been teaching online for years. I would ask the others, I would ask the other candidates to volunteer the last time that they taught a class. I taught one about two hours ago, and I'm teaching one again on Tuesday. I know budgets. I was a congressional economist, and I run two small businesses. One is Charm Economics, which I started two years ago, healthcare consulting, and another is Port Skis, where you can rent skis. I found there was a need for people to rent skis in Port Washington, and nobody was doing it, so I started a business on it. I'm also the Salem Homeschool Association Treasurer, which I've been for the last two years, and I spearheaded the starting of a K-2 Science Club. I did budgets for Congress, I do them for my two businesses. So you're all working hard to adapt in a post-COVID, in a COVID world, and I will make sure that the schools are being effective. Even if you like one of the other candidates better, and they are impressive candidates, you get two votes, and I think the board will really benefit from someone whose 20 years of experiences were tailor-made to deal with the current crisis. So I implore you to vote yes on the budget, I know all the ballots went out today, and to vote for Adam.
Thank you very much. Our next, our next statement comes from Ms. Gillier.
Three years ago, when I decided to run for the Port Washington Board of Education, the educational landscape felt troubled. Our schools were being squeezed between two very different pressures, providing a good education and paying for it. Parents wanted better communication from our schools, better education for our children, and more for our money. Parents wanted excellence in the core curriculum, while they also believed that education should encompass teaching children how to respond to their instincts to be creative and innovative thinkers, to be the people our nation and our world will need in the future. Three years ago, I promised voters I would dedicate myself to change, and I have. For example, I promised I would improve communication. The Board of Education's morning meetings are now podcasts, so community members can listen to our discussions at their convenience. We formed a website task force to make information easier to access. We added a district Facebook page and hired a new public relations firm. As chair of the Curriculum Committee, I've endeavored to add the topics to our committee agenda that parents are most interested in discussing with our educators. I promised to listen more. I tell parents they have an absolute right to advocate for their children and to expect we will hear them. I wanted to build trust so we could all remember that parents, teachers, and administrators are all on the same team and we have the same goal. I promised fiscal responsibility. This year, I and my fellow trustees have voted for a budget with a tax levy increase of only 1.99%, well under the 3.36% levy that's allowed by New York State law. I could never have predicted 2020. Our schools are facing the great challenge of not only educating our children well, but reimagining how to do so in an era of social distancing. The challenge is one that cannot be underestimated, and though large, it can and must be met with smart choices, practical plan, and decisive implementation. With almost three months of remote learning behind us, parents tell me that they think the school, some parents tell me they think the school's got it just right, while some parents are disaffected or downright angry. I think we can say with certainty that this has been a difficult time for everyone. I believe parents have different opinions because they're having different experiences for many reasons. Going forward, the school district needs to take responsibility for these disparities and construct and offer a remote learning plan that works for all kinds of learners and all kinds of families. This is an institutional problem. Teachers are the linchpin of education. The district must support them as they use the new platforms to connect with their students. COVID-19 is the largest issue facing our district net right now, but it's not even remotely the only issue, pun intended there by the way. In a time of uncertainty, it makes sense to have people on the Board of Education who already understand the terrain. I was in the room when we closed, and I plan to be in the room when we open. Thank you. Please join me in casting your vote for me and in voting yes for this budget.
Thank you. Ms. Naldolny.
Good evening, anyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum and for our community. For those who may not know me, my name is Kristin Naldolny, and I am looking for your vote for the trustee, for trustee for Board of Education for Port Washington School District. In these unprecedented times, we need leaders to step up and guide us into what we now call the new normal. Now is the time for out-of-the-box thinking and proven leadership. I decided to run because I believe that I can be a conduit for positive change in our schools, with a focus on providing a first-class education while maintaining a safe and healthy environment for our students, staff, and family. I moved to Port 20 years ago and embraced all it has to offer. I've been married to my husband, Mark, for 24 years and have two sons, John, a rising sophomore at Alfred University, and Kevin, a graduating senior from Schreiber. My passion for volunteering started young, and I was fortunate to find many ways to get involved in our community. I started off volunteering at the Parent Resource Center, where my passion for education was ignited. I was a coach and on the board for the Port Washington Soccer Club. I taught at St. Peter's, but my true calling came as a kindergarten parent at Salem. I served on many committees before joining the board and eventually becoming co-president. The more involved I became, the greater the desire to do more and to ensure every child receives an appropriate and challenging education while being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. I served for four years as a trustee for the BOE. During my time as a trustee, I traveled to other schools across New York State and the country to see firsthand new and innovative ways to deliver education, and also attended state and national school board association meetings to share and learn best practices for governance of school districts. I had decided not to run for another term so that I could focus on my own education and received a master's in public health from George Washington University. I'm currently on the board at the Schreiber HSA. I'm also a volunteer with the USO and Red Cross, where I recently have been volunteering, serving frontline workers. You may find me occasionally down at Bar Beach Rowing with the Port, Friends of Port Rowing Master's Program, where I also sit on the board, helping to navigate through these times. I believe that my experience as a former trustee, parent volunteer, and active community member will make me an asset to our Board of Education. In addition to having a master's of public health and a master's in education, this experience will allow me to help the district to make educated and thoughtful decisions on providing a safe environment for all. We live in a new world, challenged political environment, and need new innovative out-of-the-box thinkers with vision to help guide us through what we inevitably be a tough transition.
So, thank you. I thank you all for your opening statements. Let's move to the first question, and it will be answered by Ms. Naldolny. Should the budget not pass, what would be your first priority in terms of further reductions?
That's a tough one. First of all, I have to knock on wood on that one because we certainly hope that the budget passes, since there is not an opportunity for a second vote, and we go straight to contingency. And when you go into contingency, there actually is very, there, there's, you lose a lot of control of what you can actually keep and what you, what you go to. Utmost safety and quality education comes first, so we would have to work within whatever budget constraints we have to assure that our students have a safe entry into our schools, our teachers have safe entry into our schools, that we are providing an appropriate and challenging education in any way that we can. Unfortunately, it means that certain programs that are not mandated could be cut, which includes programs in arts, athletics, kindergarten. So my, I guess my biggest advice is, although we need to plan for contingency, I would just really encourage everybody to support the budget.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Block?
That is a tough question. So I am pro-budget and plan on voting for the budget today. So I have to say, I'm a numbers guy, and so I would actually have to see what the numbers are. So, right, there's a couple of areas where we could cut, and sports, arts, after-school clubs, some, you know, STEAM programs, and I really need to see the detail of how much savings each one, because if one program can save most of the way there, maybe that one program is it. And if you have to cut, let's say, 10 different arts activities to make up that one program, then it's certainly possible that, you know, saving the 10 programs for the one is the better choice.
Thank you. Ms. Gillier.
Um, this question is a doozy to start with. It's a, you know, it's a Hobson's Choice that you're talking about, it's a choice with, that's really not a choice. First off, I think that at all costs, we have to make sure this budget passes so we don't go to contingency. The things that would be potentially on the chopping block, if we do go to contingency, are all the things that round out the education. So we're not allowed to cut any of the mandated programs. We wouldn't be able to make certain kinds of capital expenditures. Every single non-mandated program could potentially be cut. We would have to potentially eliminate kindergarten, the arts, music, the STEAM PEP program. None of these are choices that we want to make. So there, there is no right answer to this question. There's nothing that I would seek to cut. I think the only thing we could do is to take a very close look at the numbers and spread the pain as equally and fairly as we could. The other thing is that this is, there is no second choice, second chance at this election, at this vote on the budget because of the strange election cycle we have this year. So I would be talking to our district attorneys about what our options were there to be lobbying the state to add a second election, a second vote, which is what we would normally have in that circumstance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Naldolny.
Nope. Oh, I think Mrs. Epstein, right?
Yeah, for some reason, you called me, you called me first.
You're right, Ms. Epstein, thank you very much.
Okay, no problem. So I agree with all the other candidates, what, this is a great question to ask right out the gate. Well, first of all, we know, first of all, we do, we want to support the budget, we want to vote yes for the budget, but if we do fall into ourselves going into contingency. So we know that that contingency will be $2.8 million in cuts, of which 1.4 of that will come from those capital expenditures, right? So some of those things, like the cafeteria food line improvement that's supposed to happen, the Salem SUSA-Schreiber High School roofs that are supposed to happen, and equipment costs will have to come off right off the bat, leaving us with a little over $1 million additional to cut. So just working within the confines of those numbers, I agree with all the other candidates. I don't think that I could make this decision, and I certainly would do the best that I could to do the least amount of harm to the students without compromising quality education. I think the beauty of working on a board is that no one candidate has to make this decision alone. This is a discussion point, it's collaboration, it's, you know, looking at the numbers, it's looking at what will do the least amount of harm, and really overall, just trying to keep the student achievement high and student curriculum high.
Thank you. Now we're going to rotate the order, so Ms. Epstein, you will be first for this question. What have been the biggest failings and successes of the district's response thus far? What would you be sure to repeat in the fall, and what would you ensure does not happen?
So I think COVID-19 hit everyone by surprise, and it's in hindsight now that we're able to look and say what we, what happened and what didn't happen. I do think that unfortunately, we were all caught unexpected, and we didn't have a time to push pause for ourselves. It would have been nice, maybe, if we were able to, within the confines of the stricture of 180 days, to say we need to take a couple of days to evaluate what is going on and what works the best for us and come forth with a plan. We would still have to be building the plane as we were flying it, but at least maybe taking that moment and time to come forth with a plan, consult our stakeholders, and then move forward would help us. I think that, so that's one of our failings, we didn't have the time to press pause for ourself. I think we probably could have communicated to the community better throughout the entire process. I think we shared information as much as they could and as forthright as they could, but I think some of the information that was missing were what were some of the successes, what were some of the challenges. Some of the positive things that I think that we'll be doing in the future, I think technology for all, one-to-one, if we can make that happen, for students and for staff, I think that we will have to learn from what our mistakes were and use that information to evaluate and then move forward and continue to assess and evaluate as we develop new plans for whatever the future may hold for the fall.
Thank you. Dr. Block?
Glad you asked that question. So here, I have to disagree with Ms. Epstein on this. She said it was a surprise. This wasn't a surprise. Other schools were preparing for this for, in the weeks before, and I didn't, haven't heard any of the candidates talk about how, you know, how poorly the school district has done in response to this crisis. I do want to talk about a couple of areas, a couple of shining lights that make me proud. The first is the Invest Program, I've heard is doing incredibly well for some of our students that need the most care. I've heard they're getting that care online. And the other thing is, is that the distribution of devices. We, I'm proud that we take equity seriously here, and if we're going to shift to an online learning environment, we need to do online learning, we need to make sure that everybody is able to do online learning. So those are two areas where we did it well. However, I mean, 45 minutes a week? I mean, our high school students that are taking calculus are learning for 30 minutes a week? Meanwhile, the equivalent class, right, because calculus is generally a college class, the equivalent class is being taught by the professors for the full amount of time. So there was plenty of time to do this, and we have not succeeded in it, and I think we need to own up to that, and I think the district needs to own up to that, and if I'm on the board, I will make sure that we write this wrong. 5,000 kids, 5,000 kids tomorrow are getting undereducated because of this district's response, and nobody's willing to own up to the fact that we messed this up.
Thank you. Ms. Gillier?
Um, I'd love to know from Mr. Block which districts he thinks were preparing in January for this. To have a district this size have a complex response to COVID-19 was a colossal undertaking. And I say this as somebody who has lobbied for more contact time between teachers and students. I'm well aware that we didn't get it perfect here, and I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but to say that we were not taken unawares is, is, it's ridiculous. I think that this took the whole world unawares. Of course, it took our district by surprise. You also have to take into account that we have a very diverse district, right? We have a huge technology gap among the teacher population, among families. We had to fix that. We had to make sure people were fed. A huge amount of effort went into both of those things immediately, and I'm very proud that nobody went hungry because schools closed in Port Washington. Other things that we did well, actually, you know what, since I have 30 seconds, if, if I could change things, I would have sent out the survey to parents a lot earlier. I would have engaged in a little bit more constant reflection along the way, especially so teachers could be giving us a lot of feedback, and they could be getting the support they needed. They were asked to pivot and put in a in-person curriculum online with no notice. When we closed the schools on that Thursday, we didn't even know that we wouldn't be open on Tuesday, and if I could go back and know that, we would have closed for a while and let the teachers do some professional development and get up to speed, maybe or move our spring break up earlier. And I'll cut myself off there. Thank you.
Ms. Naldolny. So I kind of hate to use the word failings. I think that there's a lot we could have done better, but the word failings, I think, is a hard word to use. I do know there are other districts that did a lot things, a lot of things different, 100% true, and they aren't Port Washington. Some people have 75% free and reduced lunch kids, but guess what? They also get federal funding for laptops and iPads. So there's, so even though there is an inequity issue, there's a trade-off that happens. There's different things that you have to consider in every school district specifically. We're going to eliminate private schools because they really can't be part of the conversation. They have a totally different approach to things. So we're not talking about private schools, we're not talking about preschools, we're talking about public schools in New York State. Yes, we might be considered undereducated, but every school in New York State closed within the week, so, or within a week or so of us closing. So I, I think there's a lot we would do differently. I think that we should be learning from everybody involved and come up with a good plan for the fall. Communication could have been better, but our own governor was telling us in two-week increments. It's very hard to plan for three months when you don't know anything for two weeks. And as far as successes, my son's still graduating, as long as he gets his phys ed requirement. That's a success.
Thank you. Okay, so the next question, we're going to begin with Ms. Gillier, and that is, even before the current COVID crisis, our children were experiencing anxiety and other mental health challenges in record numbers. Our new circumstances are only exacerbated. How do you think the district does and/or should address our children's mental health needs? Ms. Gillier?
Um, so this, this is a subject that's important to me. I've said it numerous board meetings since this began, that I believed that this was a mental health and wellness issue for our children as well, and it's one of the reasons that I wanted to make sure that there was contact between teachers and students for the sense of normalcy, the stability. Teachers are important adult figures. Teachers are important adult figures for students, and the students do miss them. And I know our teachers miss their students as well, for that matter. Um, so yes, this is definitely exacerbated an issue that was already there. I think our district does actually very well on mental health issues. We have health teachers in this district. There are many districts that have done away with health teachers as part of budget cuts. Um, previous boards have decided that that is not something that we're willing to sacrifice. And a predominant part of the reason is because there is science to back up that when children are in crisis, the health teachers are some of the adults that they will go to. So we want them there and available. In the budget that we had um planned on adopting before the coronavirus, one of the things that we were adding was an additional, an additional guidance counselor because our guidance counselors are a little bit swamped with the new standards that, that are in place. So ideally, we would add more. Um, but I think that we are doing relatively well on this front. Um, of course, there are institutional problems that we still have to address too, uh, what that lead to this all.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Naldolmi.
All right, so mental health is a really big, it's a big issue. Um, interestingly, I sat in a webinar yesterday that this was actually a big topic. People, there's a lot of anxiety in general within uh schools with parents, and it can only be exacerbated by a global pandemic that touts such a high, like, they tout all the bad stories. It, I mean, if you're sitting, I know people that didn't leave their house literally for two months, not even to walk. Um, so it is a huge issue. Um, there have been record gun sales out there, domestic violence is up, child abuse, which is picked up very often by teachers because they can see the bruises on the kids, are not necessarily being picked up. And I do think that there has to be some level of at-risk children being checked in more um by any, either teachers or guidance counselors or anything. I cannot actually speak to how our district is doing because I am not in the room where they're making these, having these conversations with children. It's not a reported thing that we say, all right, so we had six mental health meetings today. It's not something that is readily available, but it is of utmost importance that it is addressed. Um, I think anxiety was high to begin with between gun violence and hurricanes and all this other stuff that we have drills now for, which we had a successful fire drill at my house one day, so we got that state requirement in.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Epstein.
Yes, um, anxiety and mental health, it's through the roof right now, and everything that everyone has said so far is true. I think one of the things, I, I do think that our district has made it a priority in the past. COVID did not bring it on as a priority. We're one of the few districts that had a guidance counselor in every kindergarten, in every elementary school before the mandates from last year, acquired access at all those levels. So it has always been a priority and continues to be a priority. One thing I think that we really need to look at as we move forward and we're making our plan is what does school look like in the fall? I think that school in the fall needs to have a serious mental health component. It cannot just be about masks, temperatures, and technology. It has to include mental health education as part of the curriculum or as part of the check-in, and not just for the students, but also for our teachers. Our teachers have been working around the clock. They had to change on a dime, and they're having to teach in a way that they've never taught before, while also at their home, balancing their own lives. So I think we really need to make it a priority and push it forward from that standpoint. And that's all I'm gonna say about it. I will, that's all I'm gonna say.
Dr. Block.
So this is a huge issue, and it's only been, it's only gotten bigger because of COVID-19 loneliness, behavioral regression, meaning like kids that were operating very well in a social environment and now don't have that social environment to practice in every day, they're regressing to the way they were when they were younger. And anxiety, child abuse, substance abuse, these are all things that I think teachers can help with. I think that this was somewhat in check beforehand because kids not only had access to their parents every day or their guardians, but they had access to their teachers every day. And so the one thing that I think that we could do to improve this would be, you know what I'm gonna say, more access to their teachers. I think a personal phone call would be enough each week or every three days, but the district has decided not to go in that direction. I will push the district to go in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, the next question, we're gonna start with Dr. Block. Will you follow the CDC guidelines for reopening schools in the fall? What if we can't meet those guidelines? Then what do you see as the board's role in reopening a school? And what is your position on what should drive opening, phased opening, and closing?
Sure. Um, so the answer is yes, we will follow the CDC guidelines. My boss is the former medical director of the CDC. And uh, I think that the guidelines are going to be the right things to follow. I actually received an email from my boss today saying, here is what we are going to do in September, today. It's not even June, and for September, they told me what I'm supposed to do. I'm supposed to have masks, I'm supposed to wear gloves as a teacher, how we're gonna separate. I don't see us doing that sort of planning at the district level, and I'm gonna make sure that we start doing that sort of planning quickly. Now, if we are unable to do it, for example, because our classrooms are not big enough, I would say perhaps one option would be to do in shifts, perhaps every other day, or perhaps part of a day in one, uh, one section of kids, and part of a day, another section of kids. I think it is imperative that kids get back to school as soon as possible. And so we will do whatever we can to meet the CDC guidelines, because I think it is incredibly critical that we meet the CDC guidelines. Now COVID feels like it's somewhat under control, but it's not. If we loosen up, it will come back, just like it did with the Spanish flu in 1918, where the second wave was twice as bad as the first wave. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Naldolmi.
If there's one thing that our school district does very well, is it followed guidelines, if not been above by guidelines, like done better. And uh, one of our teachers actually said today that we were a leader in our area with closing earlier than what the state had recommended um for our area, and New York State was ahead of uh other states. I think it would be unreasonable to think that we would not follow guidelines. Um, I do also think that we would be watching not just what the guidelines say, but what our local areas say. So the guidelines say, can you uh screen students? And Dr. Pernick actually just recently talked about this, how we've been working hard to get everybody to come into one entrance. Now we might need to open other entrances to kind of filter kids through other areas so that we can screen kids, so there's not 500 kids waiting outside the front door to come in. There, so I do know the conversations have already been started as to ways to look into this. As far as um support, the board would support whatever the superintendent is recommending, as long as it is reasonable, healthy, safe, and providing what is best for all the stakeholders involved.
Thank you, Ms. Epstein.
Yes, we would definitely follow the CDC guidelines. We would follow the state ed guidelines. I know BOSIS has published outline, and I, guidelines that have been shared with the superintendent, and I think the Board of Ed as well. We would definitely take all of those guidelines into consideration. Um, I think that we would, in addition to that, look at what are other school districts doing as examples to see what's working, potentially look into those areas of the country that have already opened or are opening ahead of us, and how that's all working with their hybrid plans. I do think a hybrid plan is something that we all should consider and look forward to in phasing in, which will have a component of remote learning as well as a component of contact time. But of course, with that, it comes with its challenges. What if we can't meet those challenges for that contact time under the guidelines that are presented? Well, fortunately, with foresight, our Board of Ed put in an allotment or a cushion within the budget that hopefully can help us attain and accomplish those goals so that we can meet the guidelines. Um, and I don't think that in this question, can't is an option. I think we're gonna have to just do the best that we can with what we have, and, and really try to bring the kids back in a manner that's safe and not compromising health and safety for students and for the teachers while balancing remote learning as well.
Thank you. So then, next question is uh, is we're gonna be starting with Ms. Epstein?
Oh, wait, I didn't answer yet.
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay, fine. Go ahead, please, do.
Um, so in terms of opening, um, I just want to point out that New York State already has an opening task force. The Board of Regents has an opening task force, and this district has an opening task force that is already meeting and is already developing a multiple option plan to follow CDC guidelines. Um, of course, we'll follow the CDC guidelines. The first priority, though, um, I will say, will be the safety of our students, our staff, and our teachers. Um, as Ms. Naldolmi mentioned, the Board of Education and Dr. Hines together made the decision to close our schools earlier than other schools were closing. This was against the guidelines that we were seeing at the time, but we were reading the science ourselves, and we strongly believed that we were about to be told to be, to, to close, and that COVID-19 was already in Port Washington, and we needed a couple of extra days closed. So we figured out a way to close for that Friday and Monday and let everybody catch up with us. As Mr. Naldolmi mentioned, we often try to go above and beyond here on certain things like that. And I'm confident that the, the committee that is already meeting in the district will make sure that we've come up with a plan that keeps everybody safe. My role as a board member is to um make sure that that's happening and to encourage it. I think the health and safety of the entire district and the policies we put in place is well within the governance role of a board member.
Thank you. Okay, so the next question goes first to Ms. Epstein. Um, what is your position on standardized testing? If it varies based on the test, please elaborate. And if there are COVID issues, please elaborate on those.
Um, standardized testing. I basically hold no position on standardized testing as a person. Um, I have my children do, they do take the tests. I think that it's a good portion, a good test practice for them because at some point, you're gonna have to take a test, you're not planned, you're not prepared for. I think that it's, you know, something that they can walk into. Um, so I really don't have a position against or for it. I will say this, I don't think we should test just to test. I think that the test should have meaning, it should have value, and it should be used for a purpose of evaluation of a student, and then used, if it is used for evaluation and assessment, to help the teacher learn how to teach the modalities for the children or the best mechanism of learning for the children. Not just a test so that they can sit and have a day off of school and fill in their standardized bubble tests. Um, I don't, other than the COVID aspect of the question, I don't necessarily know, other than, I, I really don't understand the question from the COVID perspective, so I have no more to add.
Thank you. Dr. Block.
So uh, I have my children do standardized tests, but as a board member, I would be open to people opting out of them. Uh, I think they uh serve a purpose, uh, and they are an imperfect tool that serve an important purpose. The important purpose that they serve is to ensure that our students are not falling a lot uh behind, that they have an objective measure to make sure that the students are not falling behind. And I think they do a pretty good job of doing this. That said, I understand there's a broad array of opinions on this, and I would never want to force a child or a family to take a test that they did not want to take. So I think it is a, you know, opt-in, opt-out, and that's the position that I would support because I think it is critical that parents at least have the option to uh have the kids have metrics to determine whether they're falling behind or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gillier.
So in terms of standardized testing, um, my, my concern with standardized testing is when we have tests imposed on local school districts by the state that have more to do with money and paradigms of who's in charge than with actually serving children. So my concern with standardized testing is evaluating teachers on things that doesn't make, doesn't, doesn't actually make sense and isn't valuable, and also influencing the environment that happens in the classroom. So sometimes we have standardized tests, and we have teachers feeling that they are compelled to teach to that test rather than do the things that um their instincts would lead them to. Um, I trust teachers, and I would rather have teachers have more freedom within their classrooms. That said, I think there's value in testing in general. We certainly have to know what's working and what's not working in education. I just would do it a little differently and give local school districts um more choice to pick and choose and make decisions that work for their district that will tell them how children are doing and what's working and what's not working, while still allowing teachers freedom to teach.
Thank you. Ms. Naldolmi.
So standardized tests range from our state tests to ACT, SAT, to AP tests. There are all kinds of standardized tests out there. And then, once we graduate college, there's LSATs, MCATs, GREs, everything. I think that there is a position for some level of standardized tests, and I do support people opting out if they believe that they would like to do so. I do think that if a test is made correctly for an assessment tool on both the level of education for our students, I think that they could be appropriately um administered. And I do think that um just like everything, there is a level of improvement that can be done overall. I don't believe in completely tying them into teacher evaluations as a standard tool across New York State um because everybody learns and teaches differently. Um, as far as the COVID response, I do know, like, in general, a lot of the state assessments were canceled, but APs was a nightmare um for a lot of kids. My, I, I was fortunate enough, my kid took five and was able to submit five, but I heard there's cheating scams and uh submission issues and everything else like that. So I would not be surprised if they actually threw them out for lack of being able to actually administer them in a fair and equitable way.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next question, we'll begin with Ms. Epstein. Um, what new supports would you put into place for teachers, specifically elementary teachers, to enable them to meet the needs of students next year? What specifically will change from where we are now? So that, let's begin with uh, Ms. Naldolmi.
So I'm sorry, did you want Ms. Naldolmi or Mrs. Epstein to?
Uh, Ms. Naldolmi, sorry.
Sorry.
All right.
What new supports will you put into place for teachers?
Um, so I think first and foremost, uh, we have to survey our elementary school teachers on what struggles and what worked for this, this uh three or four month period. Uh, we're dealing with a myriad of issues. Supports, first of all, would be professional development. Second of all, we don't actually know what we're doing in the, in the fall. Are we doing a hybrid? Are we opening completely? Are we doing staggered start times? Are, we don't actually know, but what we need first and foremost is feedback from our teachers to see what they feel they need first. Uh, one of the things that one teacher brought up today, a third grade teacher, was the use of manipulatives at home to teach fractions. And that's something that nobody probably thought about until they had to start teaching fractions. Um, and how can we uh, you know, figure a way to get every student to be able to have something to learn fractions at home? So again, me as a board member, my, my instructions would go back to the teachers and ask what they feel they need. And I do think professional development is key in this. Across the board, COVID or no COVID, professional development is key. Um, and as far as what to change, again, teachers have to drive that. It, I can't answer that because I'm not in their classroom.
Okay, Ms. Epstein.
Well, Ms. Naldolmi answered the question so brilliantly. Yes, the top of my list was definitely professional development, and probably because we all spoke to the teachers today. We learned best from them, right? They're the ones in the classrooms. They're the ones in the classrooms. So we would definitely have to talk to the teacher about what modalities they would want. Maybe they all want whiteboards, maybe they all want fraction kits. I think it will be different per cla- classroom. And of course, you know, as a board member, we can listen to whatever support they would need. I would say technology would be something else we could look at for support for the teachers in the fall if we are going to a remote learning. And technology would include Wi-Fi as well as computers. And I guess the last thing that I would say, in addition to asking the teachers, which comes first and foremost, is potentially looking into social emotional, um, care for our teachers. Again, as we brought up in the past question, the anxiety and emotional levels are not just high for our students, but they are also high for our teachers, and this was a, a unique situation. So maybe it would also incorporate that into it.
Thank you. Dr. Block?
So I, uh, I tend to agree. Uh, I think the first thing I would do is try to survey the teachers and see what were, what they thought worked and what they thought didn't, and what they thought needs to be, uh, improved upon. What I'll say is that, uh, I'm qualified to do the survey myself. This is something that I do professionally, and I also analyze the data. So rather than having a new budget line to hire, uh, consultants to do it, uh, this is what I do. So this is something that I could relatively easily do and provide for. So I think getting the teacher's perspective, analyzing it, and then feeding it back, and not in six months, but in a month, is something that we could definitely do this summer to try to improve education for the fall. The other thing I think we need to be prepared for is, uh, hybrid schooling. And one option there is to leverage our, uh, assistant teachers more, have them do breakout sessions more with smaller groups. So maybe, and sometimes online and sometimes i- in person. So you could have, instead of a class of twenty, uh, you could have, uh, an assistant teacher meeting for a pe- period of time with a group of four or five students. Sort of the way that you do now with reading group, but, uh, this is something we're gonna have to leverage even more, particularly if we're home part of the time. I haven't seen that really happening yet, um, but, uh, it's something that I hope to help implement.
Thank you. Ms. Gilia?
Um, so I think that, uh, you know, we have a very strong history in this district of collaboration, um, of shared decision-making, of asking input from teachers while administrators are designing curriculum and making decisions like this. Um, I, so the first step here is a- asking them what they need and what they think. Um, we've, we've seen this three months. Um, we know it hasn't been perfect for all parents. The teachers are equally frustrated. They were asked to do something difficult very, very quickly. They don't like the amount of angst that is coming from the community at them. They want to be providing a fantastic education for the kids. And, and I should note that in a lot of places, we still are. It's just not perfect yet, um, and maybe in some ways far less than perfect, but we need to work with them to figure out exactly why. Uh, my job as a Board of Education trustee is, is to enable the educators, not insert my place in, it, myself in the place of the educators. And so I can tell you things that I think are necessary and will help, but the details of it will have to come from them. I think we need better technology for everybody. The district, Dr. Hines has mentioned that we're looking at a potential one-to-one initiative of technology. So every student and every teacher has a device in their hands that's provided by the district and professional development so that everybody is trained to do, to use those.
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with Ms., uh, with Ms. Gilia, and the question is, um, are you satisfied with the management of the school district's finances, technology, facilities, new construction administration, and other administrative functions? If not, what would you do to improve the school district's management practices and transparency?
So give me the list again. Technology, budget.
Finances, technology, facilities, new construction, and other administrative functions, I think. And if not, what would you do to improve the school district's management prac- practices and transparency?
So I think, ideally, um, in anything, right? You want to hire the best person right at the beginning, because then you can trust them. And I think we've done that in a lot of places, um, and it has a good result. So in our technology department, um, we have a director of technology who came here seven years ago. When he arrived, we were fifteen years behind other districts on technology. Today, we're ahead of other districts on technology. It turns out, maybe we wish we'd been further ahead for coronavirus, but we were able to provide things very quickly that other districts would not have been able to do. We supplied seven hundred and fifty Chromebooks and iPads for families that didn't have one or teachers who didn't have one. I think likewise, um, our budget, I would be very hesitant to say anything, anything negative about, um, our budget administrator who has prepared about fourteen budgets this year so that we could look at all the alternatives once coronavirus hit and do our absolute best for the community. This is the lowest tax levy increase in several decades and the leanest it could be. I'm cutting myself off there, even though there's a lot more to say.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Naldolney?
So I do have to echo a little bit with what Rachel had said. First of all, as far as new construction, sometimes our hands are tied. We ha- we, as a school district, are responsible for going with the lowest, most responsible bidder. Sometimes that works to our advantage and sometimes it doesn't. However, as it is, it's a responsibility that we have. As far as management of finances and technology and everything, first of all, hindsight is always twenty-twenty. So we can always look back and say, we could have done this, we could have done that. I do think that there, um, the finances in general, first of all, we're under a new administration right now. We have new people in these seats that need to kind of get a little acquainted with everything that's going on. With that said, Mrs. Callahan has been with the district for several years, has been doing this for several years. And it's very easy for people to go and say, why can't we cut this? And why are we have this? And why do we have that? I personally sat with two, two high school kids that were looking for money for clubs that we went line by line through that budget and ex- and got an explanation for everything. We are actually fairly transparent. It's just people don't have a billboard showing the information in their front lawn, so people think we're not transparent. So sometimes you actually have to look for the information, but it's there. So it kind of sounds like, uh, the person that might be asking the question believes that we aren't doing a great job. But I do think that for the level, the question, am I satisfied? Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Ms. Epstein?
So for this question, am I satisfied from the perspective and vantage point that I'm at, and I sit at? I'm certainly satisfied with what I see. Now, I'm not privy to everything. I can only attend public meetings and listen to what they say. However, I have been sitting, attending every budget and facility public meeting since I can't even remember now, for the last three to four years. And in each one of those meetings, I listen to presentations about roof, roof replacement, roof repair. We look at samples of roofs. So every time there seems to be an issue where money is going to be spent, they bring experts in, there's discussions about it. They evaluate and try to think creatively, you know, when they have a cost issue, and they try to manage it in the best manner possible. I've also seen that we've taken tours, we've invited the public to take tours, to look at our facilities, to identify what we have, what we've been doing, to showcase new construction, to, you know, showcase bond work, things of that nature. So from that standpoint, I think that's been very positive. I can't say enough about the technology department, not only during COVID, but before COVID, and they've just been rock stars throughout. Mrs. Callahan, that everyone is saying the praises, this year has worked tirelessly. The rules continually changed the game. She created every budget option proposal that the board had asked for. She presented it tirelessly. And as Parents Council President, when I constantly asked her questions and asked her to simplify things and asked her to put it in bite-sized morsels, she did it without hesitation because that was her ultimate goal to make it user-friendly. So I'm satisfied.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Block?
So, uh, y'all can probably guess my answer here. I'm not satisfied, but I want to give you a go at your clear reasons why I'm not satisfied. Um, and I also want to clearly define myself differently than the other three candidates, who have all said that they are for change, but have all said that the district is doing a great job with schooling right now, and that the district is doing a great job with their finances. So what, what change are you for? I want to give a couple of clear examples of where finance has let us down. The first one was a big Port Washington Times article a couple of months back that said there were seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants that just got in. And I reached out to the superintendent, had a meeting with the superintendent, had a meeting with the board, and they said, we don't know where that money is. So seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you don't know where that money is? Now, that shouldn't have been the answer, and wherever that money was, that shouldn't have been the answer. Again, with, uh, electricity, something I discussed at the, uh, discussion last night. If you look in the current board, we should have much, much lower electricity in this school year than we did in last school year. But we have a higher expected spend. It says anticipated expenditure. This is the board, uh, the budget that we're voting on. It says anticipated expenditure is about, uh, ten or twenty thousand hot dollars higher than last year. Why are we spending more on electricity than we were last year? And I've heard that, well, we have to, you know, we have to adjust for it, but in reality, there's one right way to do a budget, and this is not it.
Okay, thank you. So the next question, we're gonna go first to Dr. Block. I'm interested in understanding more about the way that our port teachers are teaching. I see a lot of worksheets at the elementary level, however, more developed learning at the middle school level. Since Dr. Hines has entered the picture with his emphasis on play and the emotional component of learning, how will we see you as a board member help implement his agenda?
So as a board member, I think what I would do is aim for more transparency. I want to see, uh, clear vision. I want to see it clearly articulated. I have seen some very high-level ideas, but I haven't seen them applied. So I'm gonna ask that Dr. Hines really try to apply those ideas and say, here is what we are going to do at the K to two level. Here is what we are going to do at the three to five level. Rather than just saying play is great, I want to see, here is what we did before. Here is what we did after, and make that public. There's no reason we can't make that public. And then when we get asked questions like this, we can point to a sheet that says, here is what we're going to do. So that is what I would do to try to increase the transparency, because I think the school district, particularly under new leadership, uh, and particularly at a time like this, needs much, much more transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gilia?
So I think it's important to talk about what the role of a board member is. The board is not a monolith, and we're seven different people with seven different backgrounds, seven different experiences and opinions and ex- expertise and educational philosophies. But we're also not the educators, and we need to, uh, listen to our educators as they make recommendations on how to change curriculum and support them. We do have the ability to say, we're not okay with this plan, go back to the drawing board, but we're not the ones who should be making the plan in the first place. That said, there are ways as a board in an appropriate governance role that we can influence these things that are bigger questions about what kind of schools do we want and what kind of district we, do we want to be running. So as Chair of the Curriculum Committee this year, I've tried to make sure that the things that are on our agenda are these educational issues that have to do with our identity and values as a school district. So unfortunately, coronavirus got in the way, but we were going to discuss the core extension at Weber in March. We were going to discuss homework in April, which is a topic that is important to many people and has to do with these questions of play and, um, handouts versus project-based learning. I also want to point out that our district is already doing a lot of things that would fall into Dr. Hines philosophies. And I'm sorry, I can't expand on them.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Naldolney?
So it's an interesting question to be asking people that are running for a school board, what our teachers are doing. I think the first answer to that question was, why don't you ask the teachers what they're doing? I do believe there is a fine balance between too much work and getting out and exercising a little bit or getting some fresh air. I do believe that there is some necessity for recess. In the middle school, they do, at least they used to, I'm assuming they still do, have recess after lunch. Um, I know with the construction and everything, it was a little bit weird, but, um, I, I think that there is a fine balance. Just like if somebody works an eight-hour day, they take a lunch break, they take fifteen-minute breaks, they get outside, they get some fresh air, or maybe they choose not to. But I do believe that there is some level of our younger kids needing to have that peer interaction and some, um, non-thought-provoking time, uh, away from a piece of paper or a screen. I do actually believe in vision, and I would love to have a great vision for our school district um, and see it move in a way that does offer, again, a, a challenging education, but not at the risk of mental health issues, anxiety, and all about schoolwork. So again, to answer the first question, ask the teachers what they're teaching.
Okay, very good. Ms. Epstein?
Yes, um, so I'd love to build off of where Mrs. Gilia started, which is, let's define again the role of a board member. Role of a board member is to have governance through policy, looking at the budget, and oversight of the superintendent. Now with all of that, and implementing Dr. Hines' vision, mission, and core values, that would be a decision through policy, through the governance of the Board of Education. So definitely, the Board of Education and the several members that sit on it would work with him to either craft or whatever he has crafted and, and discuss, vision, mission, and core values. As a parent volunteer, I have not been privy, nor do I, am I privy to the curricular matters of how teachers teach, nor have I been privy to the vision, mission, or core values yet, or been in the discussions if the board members have been having that. But you have to work within your board to create all of that. That's what a board does. As far as transparency within our district, our district offers committee meetings on a monthly basis that are then podcasted. Our Board of Education meetings are livestreamed. And from someone who has been going to all of these meetings that provide a lot of the information that is not being shared here, it is shared at all of those meetings. And if you've missed a meeting, you should listen to the podcast because it will definitely give you the insight as to what is going on in our district. There are, I cannot stress enough, a Board of Education is not just one person. A Board of Education has to be a collaboration of many working together.
Thank you. So the next question, we're gonna begin with Ms. Epstein. Do you have opinions about best practices for remote learning, whether at primary, intermediate, high school, for specials, to ensure that all students are engaged? And have you looked at what other school districts are doing well locally or nationally?
I personally do have opinions, and I'm happy to share them. But again, the curricular objective here is, does not just fall on a board member. They, it's not a curricular board in that regard. However, that being said, there is a task force that has been formed that is going to be made up of board members, parents, teachers, custodians, other community leaders, that are going to look at and identify. They will look at the CDC guidelines, they will look at other hybrid models, other remote learning models. But I personally, yes, have been researching it, have read every article. I think yesterday I quoted, uh, Maryland had just decided to have their primary school, that elementary school, they're sending those students to school physically for an abbreviated period of time, but remote learning program will be happening for the middle and high school. I saw again, another school in South Carolina has another abbreviated program where some days are on, some days are off for all of their students again, and the, the other portion of the day is filled with remote learning. So definitely, if I'm on that task force, I would be more than happy to submit some of those ideas and have those discussions. But as a sole board member, it's, the decision is not up to me to determine the curriculum direction.
Okay, Dr. Block?
So it was a long question. Do you mind repeating it again?
Sure.
Thank you.
What are your, what, have you reviewed best practices of remote learning? What are your, what, have you reviewed best practices of remote learning for primary, intermediate, high school, and special? To ensure that all students are engaged? Can you describe what other school districts are doing well locally and nationally?
Sure. So first, I'm an online teacher. I teach in an online master's program. This is something that I've been doing for years, so I have lots of training in it because the university forces me to be trained in it. And so I think that it would make sense to provide, you know, required training to our teachers if they're going to be using this. I think it would be helpful. I don't think it's an enormous time commitment. And I think it can help because the interaction between online is very different, as you can see, than it is in person. I think it allows you to do some things that you couldn't do otherwise. And I think a lot of things you could do otherwise, you may not be able to do. And also the time periods that it takes to give a lecture. So I know I generally, my online class, the lectures are about 60% of the time than they are in a in-person class. So this is something that I know about, and I think it'll vary enormously because for our elementary kids, they're spending a lot less time getting lectured and they're more being monitored with one-on-one time. So it's very fundamentally different. I have, I would look to the international, some of the international models. I think that Italy and Spain and Switzerland, Switzerland's already back to school. So those are the models that I'm going to look to, to think about how we are going to approach this new hybrid model. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Giliar.
So yes, I mean, as a board member and as a parent who's living through this too, I've been obsessively reading about what's going on in education and talking to my friends all across the country about what's going on in their schools. And the one thing I can say is the sky's the limit on the number of options that people have tried. I have heard we took two weeks off, we took no time off. My child is on for six hours a day. My child is not online at all. And I think that we need to look, so as a board, we looked at our neighboring districts and we did see what kind of contact time and what the learning looked like in our neighboring districts. And I think that there are many that are in about the same neighborhood, if not doing not as well as we are. But there are some local ones that seem to be doing better. The parents are a little happier with what's happening. I don't know how the teachers feel in those districts, though I only know about the parents, and we do need to think about the teachers as well. Going forward as a board member, I think that my role is to make sure that our district is looking at the best practices. Best practices right here, by the way, we have some best practices from in this district. We know we have success stories. We should be looking at our success stories and figuring out what's happening in those classrooms to make children continue to be engaged and to allow the teachers to continue to move forward with the education. But the dictation of what happened should not be coming from me individually.
Thank you. Ms. Noldolny.
First and foremost, I do want to say I am actually for online learning. I got my master's in public health through an online program, so I am 100% for online learning. However, I paid and signed up for an online learning program. Public school is not an online learning school. It doesn't mean there's no place for it. It's just different. People don't move to Port Washington so that their kid can sit in front of a computer and go to school. So number one, I do kind of need to say that. When you look at online programming, there's 100% ways that we can incorporate it into every aspect of school. I think there are best practices. The younger you are, the less screen time you should have. But if we wanted to offer a foreign language that we do not offer in the high school right now for a handful of students that they might be able to get through some collaborative program with other North Shore schools, I don't see why we can't do something like that. I, I actually would encourage something like that as a board. Just keep in mind, these are opinions. You asked for an opinion. You didn't ask what I would do as a board member. So the question is, do I have an opinion? This is my opinion. I do think that there is things that we can incorporate on all levels, but it is a public school. We are not looking to turn to an online complete school for the rest of Port Washington forever. So how can we do better? Definitely something we can look into.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Noldolny will go first for this next question. How does or would parent and teacher and community feedback factor into discussions and decision-making? How would you recommend or what, how are you thinking about ways to ensure a direct pipeline? So parents and teachers and community can give you feedback? So Ms. Epstein, sorry, Ms. Epstein, yes. No, Ms. Noldolny, sorry.
Sorry, I was just.
I slipped on the sheet of paper. There's four of you and it's hard to keep track of the sequence.
No problem. So there we are. I think that feedback is a very important tool all across the board. I, I do, the board put out a survey to kind of get some very basic information in general to start off with. I do think that there has always been a level of being able to give feedback. That's what HSAs are for. That's what parent-teacher conferences are for. That's what meeting, being able to email or write to any of the administrators, your teachers and the Board of Ed, that information is always been out there for you to be able to communicate with them. As far as a board member goes, our, a board member is not the person that goes back to the board and gives this feedback. They enable the school district to get the feedback, to analyze the feedback, and then implement change if that was the case. However, that is not, it's not necessarily the board's job to provide the feedback. I do think that, as Rachel has stated before, they've made some great strides with better communication avenues, Facebook pages with parent council and HSAs and everything else like that. And sometimes it's just a matter of somebody has frustration that minute and it's not legitimately, you know, something we have to follow. And sometimes it is something we have to follow.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Epstein.
So sorry, my computer wasn't responding there. I would agree. How, how do we direct feedback? We have those place, those practices in place. As parent council co-president this year, we opened up community conversations. We actually saw that the board was grappling with an issue about bond versus transfer to capital versus what we should be doing and really was trying to gauge what the community wanted. We opened up community conversations with Board of Ed members and administrators. We advertised it through our local HSA newsletters and also through our parent council mechanisms and through this district website and Facebook page and was able to interact both remotely and in person for an organic conversation where it wasn't just the committee member or the community who was asking questions, but also the Board of Education and the administration was able to gain feedback and ask their own questions to gather what they wanted. Constantly as parent council co-president, we're receiving information through the HSA presidents, even people that come and just talk to us generally, providing their feedback. When we heard that the Board of Education was looking to do a survey, we had some surveys already, you know, in our disposal and we had shared that information with the Board of Education so that they could utilize it, so they could build upon a survey and then send it forward. So I think we should just continue that. We should expound upon it. I don't think that you can, I think you can survey too much, but I do think that there are points when we should be surveying and surveying during this time and as we move forward will be very valuable.
Thank you. Dr. Block.
So I've had actually some very good experiences and one very bad experience with feedback. So we're going to try to fit them all into two minutes. So I have talked to our principal, Dr. Ferrante, about an issue at the second grade and fifth grade level where the kids were not able to access the upper field, the only grass field that we had. And she and I had two conversations about it. And within about a month, we were able to get all of the kids, not just two-thirds of the kids, but all, every single student in the school access. So that's an area where feedback actually really worked. I've had conversations with Dr. Hines on multiple occasions, about that lost $750,000 and others. In fact, Ms. Giliar, you wrote about talking to a parent on the ice skating rink. And yeah, I was that parent. So, but I did have one experience that was really not very good. It was with the Board of Education directly because they are the highest place that you can go. My son had a kindergarten teacher that was out for 36 times, 36 times in the year. And I found out about this from, not from anybody else, but from him. And I got a letter signed by 15, every parent in the class, and we brought it to the Board of Education. And this was two years ago in June. Do you know what the Board of Education did? They said, we'll get back to you. They never got back to me. This is a letter about 15, signed by every parent in the class, and they never had the respect to get back. When I, if I'm on the board, I will make sure that in situations like that, we always get back to parents because that is essential. They've spent their time to try to identify an issue. They don't want to be focused on public education. They want to be focused on, on their kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Giliar.
So in general, I think more feedback, the more feedback, the better. Different feedback has different amounts of value. Obviously, a survey that surveys all of the community gives us a lot more to go on because we know that we are getting a broad cross-section. But I happen to think that smaller doses of feedback are very useful too. In the curriculum committee, which I chair, and the policy committee, which I sit on, and the budget committee, which I don't officially sit on, but I go to every meeting, we've tried to foster more conversations this year during the committee meetings. Because instead of just hearing ourselves talk, we want to make sure that we're hearing from community members and from parents about what they think about the curriculum that's been presented or the policy that we're discussing, or the budget analysis that we're in the middle of doing. As a personal, in my own capacity, I've tried to post more on social media and remind people that these meetings take place and that they're open to the public and they're podcasts for people to see. I'm, I'm kind of happy that Dr. Block has brought up this issue with the absenteeism because that's a wonderful example, actually, of why parents should go ahead and bring their feedback to the correct administrator. Obviously, it's a personnel issue, and so a board would never address in public the direct situation. But those parents coming to the Board of Education and the superintendent was one of the things that made us look at the issue of absenteeism and realized that we were very lean on the administrative angle of things and that we needed an additional assistant superintendent.
Thank you. So this is the last question. When the four of you have finished answering this one, we will go to the closing statements. So beginning with Ms. Giliar. Please describe what you offer this board that is distinctive or particularly needed right now, particularly if no one else on the board can offer it. Ms. Giliar.
I think that in the current climate, what I bring is experience. Definitely, I've already been at the table. I understand the parties. We are in a very difficult position and quite aside from whether or not we're doing remote learning or not in the fall, I think we have some rebuilding to do as a community in terms of the relationships between teachers and parents and the administration. And I'm in a good position to be the person who does that work. I'm determined and I will, I will always advocate for what parents want and need for their children. And so I will be advocating to make sure that we come up with a remote learning plan that works for all families and all children. But I also understand that I can't function alone. And that's an important thing to understand going into this because the only way that any change happens is if you understand the system that you function in. As board members, we don't always agree. And I happen to think disagreement among the board is a good and healthy thing as long as it's civil. It means that we're truly thinking about the issues. But one person doesn't have the power to make the decision for the entire board. And we wouldn't want it any other way in a representative democracy. The role I play on the board is the voices at the table matter. And I'm willing to negotiate and continue to argue my position until I persuade somebody.
Thank you. Ms. Noldolny.
So just like Ms. Giliar, I actually have some experience on the board as well. Since I did serve a four-year, four years on the board, I would be able to sit at the table and hit the ground running, just catching up with more current issues rather than how a board works. I also have had two kids go through the entire kindergarten through 12th grade Port Washington school system. So I do have the experience of what kids have experienced. We are currently in how do we allow our kids to graduate? How, when are we going to have a, you know, celebration for them and everything else like that? I have strong ties and relationships within the community, including athletes, arts, and anywhere, anywhere you go, I've been there. They, and also within the district. I am an out-of-the-box and creative thinker and a very strong devil's advocate. A lot of times I will argue a point, not necessarily because it's my opinion, but because it might be looking at how others might be hurt by decisions or how it might affect others rather than a straight answer for, for any type of situation. I'm also quite determined and a quest for knowledge is something that I am constantly looking for.
Thank you. Ms. Epstein.
So I'm in a unique position. I'm not on the Board of Education, but I do sit on the sidelines as a parent volunteer. Through my role of parent counsel, even through the HSA, I've had the perspective of getting to know how the school district works. I firsthand seen the challenges that the school district has implemented, that has based on New York State law, based on financial conditions, based on state mandates. And I understand all of that. I would not have to play catch-up and learn how the rules and regulations of the Board of Education or the school district work. There definitely are things I would have to learn because I don't, I'm not at the table. I don't know all the privy information. But in a time when we need to move forward and we need to move forward quickly, my catch-up time would be very little because I could hit the ground running. I would say that I, one of my other unique skills is that I can look at things from all perspectives. Since living here in Port Washington, I've been an active member of the Diversity Committee, as well as my outreach in the committee gives me a perspective to also represent at least not entirely, but at least have that vantage point. I can also present from different optics. I don't bring my issues to the table. I bring the issues of the taxpayers and the issues of the parents of the school district there. I've been through all levels of education in my time here. I'm a doer. I'm not afraid to challenge or ask questions, even when it's not the popular one or when everyone else is in the majority. I research, I evaluate, I assess. But I think the one thing I do is I've really earned the respect as a parent to show that I'm a hard worker and that I treat everyone collaboratively and with consensus.
Thank you. Dr. Block.
I think what I bring to the table is a fresh perspective. I have the courage of my convictions. And emergencies, you have to make tough decisions and they're not always going to please everybody, but that is often what is best. And so I'm going to be someone that is able to help make those decisions with the rest of the board. I'm also uniquely qualified in this period of time to be on the board when we are in the biggest public health crisis in a century. This isn't something that happens every decade or every 25 years. Nobody has lived through this before. And I'm a public health expert. I write articles on this every day. I have one out today in healthcare business today. I'm also an online teaching expert. It's something that I've been doing for years. So I know how to use Canvas. I know how to use Blackboard. I know how to use Zoom. I know how to use all these things and the merits of all of them. Because I think a lot of us believe that we're going to be in a hybrid environment next year. I also know how to do budgets. I did budgets for Congress. And when we talk about experience, I walked into Congress, as a member, obviously, as a staffer, but I walked into Congress like three months before the Great Recession and managed to figure it out there. So I'm confident that I can hit the ground running and learn this stuff pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we begin the closing statements, I'd like to remind everybody that the voting for these candidates will be, and the school budget will be sent by mail-in ballot and must be received by June 9. And that each ballot for the Port Washington Library trustee election will be sent with the ballot for the Board of Education. will be sent with the ballot for the Board of Education. Matthew Strauss is running unopposed for the five-year term as the library trustee. So let's begin the closing statements. We're beginning and we'll do it in the same order. Ms. Epstein, will you go first?
Certainly, thank you. Thank you again for this opportunity, thank you to the community again for listening to us. I'm going to steal Ms. Naldolme's line from last year, last, last night, I guess it was, that I just encourage everyone to vote yes for the budget. The Board of Education did work very hard on it and we do think it's a great budget put forward. So please support that budget. I know absentee ballots went in the mail and people were receiving them today. So we encourage you to get those in by June 9th. I'm not a native New Yorker, I'm not a native to Port Washington. And five years ago, my family landed here. And since that day that we landed here, I've done nothing but give for that school, for the school district and give to the community. I've raised my hand, I've volunteered and I'd offered insight through, through the school district, through outreach, through my local synagogue and whatever opportunity arose. I promise that I'll give my full attention to every aspect of this position while balancing the needs of all the represented parties. I will listen, hear, evaluate and communicate as I've done consistently for the past five years. I am here to serve you. I don't have an agenda, but I'm here to give back. I've worked with the faculty, school leadership, parent leaders, superintendent in the Board of Ed and have a thorough understanding of how to get things done. I have to also say that I think I have a thorough, I have a partnership and I understand that I am not the only person on a Board of Education. I have to be able to work respectfully and in accord with all of the members. And I understand that my opinion and my way are not the only way that we can go. I look forward to continuing to serve what I have just begun and appreciate your vote for Julie Epstein. Thank you. Check your mailbox.
Thank you. Dr. Block?
Thank you. So I've been in Port a long time and we've never seen anything like this. This is the most important school board election I've seen and I lived through the closing and reopening of Salem School. My kids just want to see their teachers more. The district says it has a plan for next year, but I haven't seen any evidence of it. And how can you really trust what plan they're going to come up with after nine minutes a day? The board won't admit it, the district won't admit it, but they need a little help. They need a little better understanding of public health. They need a little better understanding of online learning and I can provide both of those things. I have the expertise to work with the current board and make it better and help it evolve to meet the changing needs of our kids in the new decade. Not just 2020 to 2021, but 2020 to 2030. I believe that public schools are the great equalizer and our schools are what, part of what makes Port such a great town. My wife and I went here and we moved back. I want the schools to do more. I want to think about ways that we can have 10 clubs like Jericho Elementary, not zero like Salem before I came in or one now that I'm leaving this Salem HSA. Even if you like one of the better, the other candidates better and they are very impressive candidates, I think that the discussion tonight shows that. You have two votes and I think the Board of Education would benefit from someone who's 20 years of work experiences were really tailor-made to deal with the current crisis. I have the passion, public health experience, online teaching experience to help this district give the kids, give our kids the education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Giliar?
As a board member, I will always advocate for the needs of students and for the support our teachers need. I understand limitations of my role. I'm asking you to reelect me as a Board of Education trustee, not hire me as superintendent. It's not my role, it's not the role of a trustee in this community of bad-mouth education. So while I think we can all accept that a hurried assembly of a district-wide remote learning plan to replace decades of in-person learning was far from perfect, my role as a trustee is to be a conduit from the community to the superintendent about those flaws. And believe me, I have been. And even to make recommendations collaboratively with my fellow trustees and to ensure that our superintendent has a collaborative process in place to create a better plan for the future. My job as a trustee will outlive COVID-19. We have a new superintendent who wants to make a strategic plan for this district, which incidentally is something that I said this district needed badly when I ran three years ago. I'm devoted to supporting our district in creating a long-term plan and deciding where we want education to go in Port Washington and what we want out of it for our children. I believe the best way to understand any issue is to ask questions. And if you ask questions and you remember to challenge your own assumptions and those of others, you always have fresh eyes. It's been my pleasure to serve Port Washington for the past three years and I look forward to serving for another three years. When you get your ballot in the mail, please cast your vote for me and please vote yes for this budget our students need it.
Thank you. Ms. Naldolme?
I want to thank again the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. And I also want to thank everyone for tuning in tonight with some interesting and challenging questions. First and foremost, I want to encourage everyone to support our budget. The current board worked very hard to present a budget that really tries to be sensitive to the taxpayers coming in under 2% as well as trying to preserve as much as we can educationally. Port Washington cannot go into contingency. Your ballot should have been received in the mail today, if not in the next couple of days. It could not be easier to vote this year. Rain, sun, snow, it does not deter the US Postal Service. It has been great learning not only about what concerns our community, but how are my fellow candidates sit with different issues. We all bring different perspectives and different experiences. We are at a crossroads and we can either go back to what we were or move forward to a better district. In order to not keep you much longer, I would ask that if anyone has any questions, concerns or anything, please reach out. My experience as drive and perspective as well as leadership makes me a great person to rejoin the BOE table. So I do encourage you on those ballots, vote for Chris and vote yes for the budget. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates for your considerate answers and your closing remarks. Thank you to the dozen league members who worked so hard to make these, this virtual forum and last night's possible. And to Judy Jacobson, our formidable Leaguer, League's Voter Services Chair, who had the courage to accept the challenge of offering virtual forums on almost no notice. Thank you for actively participating in your community. This is to the audience and viewers. Your taking the time to educate yourselves about candidates is critical to sustaining a healthy democracy. Remember to mail in your ballot and good night. Thank you. We should all turn off our videos.